Good evening. I'd like to call to order this January meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees will begin tonight by going around and introducing ourselves and sharing something we're reading if you choose to do so. Kathy, how about we start with you?
Kathy Loser, and I'm reading the book written by Charlotte Zitlog, 1971, How We Won. It's a great book. I would highly recommend it. It shows you that one person can make a difference.
And I am still listening to, I'm sorry, I'm Chris Harrison, and I'm still listening to, or just finishing The Secret Letters by Margaret Peterson Haddix, and also reading Where the Lost Ones Go.
I'm Greer Carson, and I am reading Ursula Le Guin's translation of the Tao Te Ching. I don't know why. And my family is still playing Goat Simulator 3, and I really don't know why.
Oh, my gosh, that's really funny. I love that so much.
Yeah, it's kind of fun.
I'm Jamie Burkhart. I am reading nonfiction right now, starting to study for my Networking Plus exam.
Well, I am reading Barbara Kingsler's Demon Copperhead.
First item on the agenda for this evening is the Consent Agenda items, which include the minutes of the December 14th board meeting, the minutes of the January 11th work session, the minutes of the January 11th executive session, the monthly financial report, the monthly bills for payment, the personnel report, and the board meeting calendar. Do we have a motion to approve those items?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we will hear from Greer with his monthly director's report.
So a couple of highlights, as we usually do. Our content development team recently reviewed and inventoried the Herald Times print archives to determine their condition and to consider how some, if not all, of these materials might fit into our collection practices and/or digitization goals. Unfortunately, the physical archives are not in adequate condition to either store or effectively digitize on our part. However, in discussions with IU's digitization staff in the Indiana State Library, we're very confident that the preservation of and access to the HD content itself is ensured via microfilm, which we do collect and make publicly available here at MCPL. There are also possible options for digitizing the content directly from the microfilm, which we'd like to explore going forward. We are once again the proud recipients of the Wall Family Grant. This year, we'll be using the money to build a digital creativity station at Ellisville. Our Children's Services Department received a few well-deserved compliments from parents and caregivers. I was struck by a unique recommendation for our Library of Things collection, Folding Kayaks. Some quick Googling showed me that this isn't a bad suggestion at all, but I'd probably want to have a quick conversation with our friends at Parks and Rec before unleashing dozens of novice kayakers on the Blake Griffey staff. But it's great to see that our community is expressing a growing interest in this exciting new area of collection development. A quick note on our department updates per our annual board meeting calendar. We won't have an update this month, due in part to the length of our agenda and the finance committee meeting immediately following this meeting. But generally speaking, we're going to be pretty fluid with our schedule of department updates this year. We have a few new managers. We have a new branch opening, and we have plenty of moving parts across the entire system right now. And there are likely going to be a couple of double features before the year's out. And if you do the math, once we open Southwest, there are more department updates than there are months in the year. So we'll be a little flexible with how we do those department updates. And finally, I've kind of passed around a print copy of the Indiana State Library's annual report for 2022, as it features MCPL and our role in the new find-free movement within Indiana, which is great to see. So happy to answer any questions.
Can you talk about the baking kits? I thought that was an interesting collection.
Yeah, so another part of our Library of Things collection, the baking kits, was a proposal for a set of circulating baking kits, which came from a group of staff who won our library innovation grant last year. And they're going to be coming to present to us in April and show you all the kits themselves and talk about how they've been circulating and share some patron feedback and some of the sort of what you might call circulating programming that goes around with these baking kits. Here are some recipes you can try and show us how you did, bit of a nailed-it kind of approach to doing baking kits at the library. So it's a great thing. And again, our Library of Things collection development has really taken off, so we're excited by that.
I was interested in the suggestion of adding CO2 monitors to the Library of Things. What kind of CO2 monitors are they talking about, like for your house?
I assume they mean, yeah.
Are they carbon monoxide?
Like the carbon monoxide detectors you would put in your house.
Okay.
I think there's a correlation between that and the quality of your air in terms of spreading COVID.
Good point.
Interesting. Okay, so anything else for Greer? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. And I'm just going to check with Greer. Do we need to do a, do we need to vote on the change orders tonight?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So do we want to separate those two items out?
Well, if I could, I'll give a couple of quick branch updates and then kind of walk through all of the change orders if that's, and then answer any questions people have.
Let me just go ahead and do a motion then.
Sure.
So do we have a motion to approve the change orders that Greer's going to describe to us?
So moved. Second.
All right.
Okay, so very quickly, some branch updates. The drywall hanging and finishing continues throughout the building. The exterior limestone veneer installation is nearly complete, and I have to say, looks fantastic. The rooftop units are finally in place, and the painting in the garage, as well as the interior bathroom tile installation, has begun. The electrical switch gear from Duke has been delayed due to a supplier issue, and this impacts the heating of the interior of the building and the permanent installation of the elevator and other mechanical pieces, which require dedicated electrical. So we are currently, and have been for some time, using portable heating units in order to stay on schedule with that drywall installation, among some other things. The change orders. So first, the storm and sanitary tie-ins need modified. This change order is for the materials, labor, and some additional rock excavation needed to move those tie-ins to the main drainage systems on the northeast side of the building. That is the most expensive change order out of all of these. Then we have a minor modification to our flooring plan in the lobby, which sits right outside of the large programming room, where we prefer to have built-in carpet rather than laying a physical carpet down for obvious safety reasons. We need to add blocking to the walls in the staff work area so that we can eventually hang coat hooks and other wall-mounted storage solutions. And we're looking to add a motorized roller shades for the windows in the large programming rooms. The traditional pole shades for windows like this are actually being phased out due to an industry shift to safer blind and shade poles, which don't present as much of a hazard to children. So our options are to go with a crank shade, a battery-powered shade, or a hardwired motor shade. And we would prefer the hardwired motor shade for both durability and aesthetic purposes. And then finally, we need to add a bulkhead on the south side of what we're calling the quiet reading room. It's going to hide a support beam that's in that space and therefore make that part of the ceiling look cleaner and more consistent with the rest of the space. Happy to answer any questions on any of these change orders.
Funding for all of them?
Yes. So we have the money to do this. This brings our, this is a $45,714 set of change orders. This brings our grand total of change orders to $432,920. So we're still within our contingency area, but I will say now that we need to start looking carefully at each individual change order going forward as we get closer to opening the branch, because we've certainly had a lot of them. I don't expect any more rock excavation-related change orders after this, but there will certainly be some other minor things. There were a couple of pieces we looked at doing recently in the parking lot that we're probably going to defer on, just because we're at that point where we say that might be a luxury versus that's an essential thing like the storm and sanitary tie-in piece. So that is certainly the mentality we want to have at this point.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments for Greer? Seeing none, do all in favor of approving the change orders as Greer described signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, next, we're going to hear, to look at a funding agreement between the City of Bloomington and CATS and their contract. So do we have a motion to approve the funding agreement and contract between these two entities?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and we'll hear from Martin O'Neill to describe this.
This is an agreement just like the one we had with the county last month that was signed. It's a 1% increase on the funding agreement with the city. For that, we've picked up a couple of extra meetings, but most of them are just over Zoom, so it doesn't really take a lot of extra resources on our side. And apart from that, it's all standard stuff as it has been over the years.
Is the 1%
Much lower than we've received in the past. It seems like it is, but I-
It seems like it is. Like the year, I think last year, it was a 1% increase, maybe from the county. We had a little more from the city. This is this year, with all the, you know, financial headaches that everyone's gone through and stuff like that, we did our numbers, and we all agree that 1% was adequate for this year.
Just a note that I believe on the actual contracts, there is an error in the names. It still lists Marilyn as the director and John Walsh as the president. So we are just going to strike through those and sign them as they appropriately with Greer and I signing them. So just so that's noted, that we are aware of those problems. We didn't feel like it was going to change the actual agreement at all. Okay. All those in favor of approving the agreement between the City of Bloomington and CATS signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it.
And just, they have Michael White's name on here, too.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Living in the past, but that's okay. That's understandable.
We'll get all those names changed.
Yeah.
And next, we have another agreement between CATS and WFHB, an MOU that we need to approve. So do I have a motion to approve the MOU?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and Martin's also going to explain that as well.
Yep, we've been doing this, this, well, this is essentially an agreement with WFHB to write the scripts for our weekly roundup show, CATS Week, that we do every Friday, which is a sort of a synopsis of most of the meetings that we do through the week. And we've been doing this for them, I think, for almost 15 years, which is hard for me to believe, but there you go.
Some of us remember when it started.
Oh, yeah. It just feels like yesterday, doesn't it?
Do we have a, all those in favor of approving the MOU between WFHB and CATS signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Martin. Okay, and-
Just for correction, though, they need to change the names on that as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Seeing if that's the same, is that part of the MOU or still part of the other agreement contract? I think that's the one, I think that one is okay. I think it's the, it's the contract with the city that's not, because the MOU starts on page 138.
Oh, you're right. This one doesn't have a name.
And that one just says Martin O'Neill, and then it just says Board of Trustees.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's just the city one that's got the wrong names, but we'll get that fixed. All right, and moving on to new business. We begin with a resolution to transfer funds to the rainy day account. So do we have a motion to approve the transfer?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and Gary's going to explain that.
So this is a request for approval to transfer $1,376, $376,210 from the operating fund to the rainy day fund. This amount represents $240,000 from the 2022 operating surplus and $1,136,210 from operating surplus for years prior to 2022. Any questions?
Nice to have that windfall again.
Yes, it is. Very.
I just want to clarify, it says the amount represents, so the $240,000 and the $1,136 together, or?
Yes. Those together are the $1,376,210.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the resolution to transfer funds to the rainy day fund signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, next, we have a resolution to cancel old outstanding checks. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution to cancel old outstanding checks?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and Gary's going to explain that. It sounds pretty self-explanatory, but-
Yeah. So this is an audit requirement. Every year, we have to go back and write off any outstanding checks that are over two years old. We only had one, and so after approval, we will void that check.
All those in favor of approving the resolution to cancel old outstanding checks signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, next, we have a resolution to continue the PERF savings plan, and that one's going to be Kyle, I'm sorry, Becky, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution to continue the PERF savings plan?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and Becky, go ahead and explain that to us.
Okay. So this is our PERF, which is our Public Employer Retirement Fund. This is just, every year, they change the breakdown of the 11.2%. So it's a supplemental and a normal percentage. Those two together make up 11.2%, which we contribute. This is just the resolution to change the normal percent to 4.4 because they decreased the supplemental percent to 6.8%. So we're still keeping that 11.2 total. And this is something we do every year at the end of the year.
Okay. Are there any questions for Becky? Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolution to continue the PERF savings plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Becky. Okay, next, we have a resolution to adopt the proposed wage and salary schedule for 2023. Do we have a motion to approve the new wage and salary schedule?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and Greer's going to give us a little background on that.
So we've completed our compensation study and shared with you all a proposal for updating our wage and salary schedule. The new schedule better aligns us with the regional public library market in terms of monetary compensation, helping us become more competitive within that job market. It immediately improves net income for our staff by providing a minimum increase of 5%. It resolves much of the compression problem we've had by adjusting wages relative to one's time in a given position, and it is financially sustainable and something we can build on to become even more competitive in the future. We had a good work session last week to talk about details, as Abby from NFP walked us through the study. And we have some further policy and position changes we're looking to make this year, which relate to much of the feedback we received from staff on total compensation. So tonight, we seek approval of the proposed wage and salary schedule itself, and are happy to answer any additional questions.
Is most everyone happy with this?
Most everyone is happy.
I mean, I worded it that way on purpose.
We knew going in, you know, you're never going to do a compensation study and plan that pleases everyone. And, you know, there are certainly things that we wanted to be able to do that maybe we can't do financially, but this puts us in a much better position relative to that market, and a move from up to the 50th percentile of the regional public library market is a good place to build off of. And it does turn around immediately and put more net income in the hands of our staff. So those are big pieces for us.
Are there any other questions or comments? All of those in favor of adopting the, of the resolution to adopt the 2023 wage and salary schedule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have a policy update. This is also something we're voting on, the policy update? Are we voting on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Related to that schedule.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the personal leave policy update?
Second.
Okay, and Kyle's going to go ahead and clarify that for us.
Kyle Wiggemeyer-Hardy, this is probably the smallest change we've ever made to a policy, as you have just passed the new wage and salary and wage schedule. We need to update our personal leave policy to include the new pay grades 102 through 106 for personal leave for, and then personal leave for pay grades 118 to 128. So it's just to match what you've just approved of the salary and wage schedule.
I just wanted to check the language. 102 to 116, not 106, correct?
106, you were correct.
To 116?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll make that adjustment.
No, it is here. I just wanted to make sure it was matching.
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions for Kyle? Okay, all those in favor of approving the personal leave policy update signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Kyle. Okay, next, we have the resolution to set the 2023 salary for the library director. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved. Sure.
Okay, and I'm just going to go ahead and read the completed forms, since the one that's in the packet does not have the numbers in it. The Board of Trustees of the Monroe County Public Library, having conducted appropriate evaluation and considerations, hereby adopts the following resolution concerning the annual salary for the library director. For the calendar year 2023, the annual salary for the library director shall be $108,800, together with all appropriate benefits consistent with the position. This salary increase is retroactive to the first pay date of 2023, which falls on January 13, 2023, and includes the pay period beginning on December 19, 2022, and ending on January 1, 2023. In witness whereof, the Board of Trustees of the Monroe County Public Library has adopted this salary resolution for the library director this 18th day of January 2023. And again, after some discussion, we had agreed that the salary amount was in, was consistent with the amounts that other employees were receiving, and it was the recommended amount from the NFP salary and wage study. All those in favor of approving the resolution to set the 2023 salary for the library director signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. And we would like to congratulate Greer on a job well done in his first, less than a year, or not, less than a year in holding his position. So thank you for your hard work and all the changes you've been bringing about and the-
I can't wait to see what the next year holds.
There you go.
All right, and finally, the last item is not a action item. It's just a opportunity for us to discuss the slate of officers for the Board of Trustees, because we will be voting on that next, next board meeting. Right now, we have myself, Chris Harrison, serving as president, Jamie Burkhart, serving as vice president, we have Kari Esri, serving as secretary, and David Ferguson, serving as treasurer. Do we have any suggestions or changes to that slate of candidates? Anyone?
I suggest we keep the slate.
No, David has another year on the board.
Yes.
Good question. Good question.
Yeah, yeah.
And thank you, Chris, for wanting to remain another year.
You're quite welcome. So we will vote and approve that next week, or next month, sorry. So that brings us to the end. We have time now for public comment. If we have any members of the public that would like to step forward and address the board, please do so at this time. Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Monroe County Board of, Library Board of Trustees Finance meeting for this evening, or the Library Board, yeah. So we just need to elect a president and secretary of the Board of Finance. Do we have a motion to elect the president and secretary of the board?
So moved. Second.
Okay. In the past, the president has usually just been the president of the board, and the secretary is usually the secretary of the board. So if Kari is willing to-
Oh, sure.
-continue on, I am as well. So unless somebody else would like to step forward and take either one of those roles. Okay. All those in favor of approving Christine Harrison as the president of the Board of Finance and Kari Esri as the secretary of the Board of Finance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. And then we have Gary to just review the investment report and policy. That's not an action item, correct? Okay.
Indiana Code requires each local Board of Finance to have an annual meeting in January. This meeting provides an opportunity to review the library's investment policy and go over the investment report. I'll start with the investment report by going over the current library cash balance compared to a year ago. Then we can look at the operating surplus report, and we'll look at actual revenue and operating cost trends from 2017 to the present, and the estimated revenue and operating cost for 2023. The total cash balance for the library at the end of 2022 was about $13,138,000. Most of the funds are in First Financial Bank. Interest rates have been on the rise in 2022. It's bad news for people trying to buy a house or a car, but higher interest rates paid on the money market account that the library has will help increase the investment income in 2023. After some discussion with our bank in December, the earnings rate, which was at six tenths of a percent, was increased to 3.2%. The new rate is over five times the old rate. I'm estimating that this will increase investment income in 2023 by about $200,000. The next report shows revenue and cost in 2022 for each fund. The year started with a total cash balance of about $19.7 million. Revenue in 2022 was about $13.5 million in total. Revenue in the operating fund was about $10.5 million, and then the balance of the revenue in the other funds is, well, it's split between the other funds. Then we have the spending column for each fund. In the operating fund, we transferred about $1,177,000 to the rainy day fund, and we had operating costs of about $9.4 million. The operating surplus for the year turned out to be about $1,047,000. I'm not going to go over all the numbers on this report, but I will highlight the spending related to branch construction. We used about $1,077,000 out of the LURF fund, about $4.3 million out of the branch bond fund, and about $2.2 million out of the rainy day fund. The total used for the branch project in 2022 was about $7.6 million. The drop from $19.7 million of total cash at the beginning of the year to about $13 million at the end of the year is mainly due to cash being used for the branch project. As Bloomington grows, so does library operating revenue. This report shows how assessed value for the property taxes in Monroe County has gone from about $6.7 billion in 2017 to an estimated $10 billion in 2024. In that period, the property tax levy has increased from about $5.8 million to an estimate, to an estimate of $7.6 million. about $5.8 million to an estimate, to an estimate of $7.6 million in 2024. The bottom line shows operating fund surplus increasing each year from 2017 to 2021. The surplus for those years up to 2021 has been put to good use by funding the expansion of service that will go into place with the opening of the new branch this year. The surplus for 2022 of a little over $1 million will serve two purposes. $240,000 will be transferred to the rainy day fund, where it'll be available for recent change orders and any surprises that may come up as we complete the branch construction. The rest of the 2022 surplus will be left in the operating fund to be used, if necessary, to cover increases in operating costs in 2023 as the new branch begins service. I have used operating cost estimates for 2023 that I know are on the high side. Operating costs in 2022 were about $9.4 million. For 2023, I have estimated about $10.8 million. Most of the increase is in wages and benefits, as expected. For some of the new positions, I've included a full year's estimate of wages, even though they won't be higher till later this year. So taking into account the carryover of $800,000 from the 2022 surplus and the expected increases in operations costs in 2023, there is still a surplus of about $400,000 projected for 2023. The final report in the Board of Finance packet is the investment policy. We haven't made any changes to the investment policy this, in 2022. So at this point, I would open it up for any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Gary, for that very good report, and good to know that we're still doing well financially. So thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn the Board of Finance meeting?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning the Board of Finance meeting signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.